2025, please rise while City Councilman Dan Shuddy leads us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, this new day, this new year that we are just blessed with, thank you for the health that you give us. We may have challenges in health, but we just pray, Lord, your healing hand and your peace as we work through even health challenges and financial challenges or whatever, as we work through this life. But Lord, I pray that tonight, as we gather here as a city, as we gather as a council and citizens of this community in this room tonight, that we will just be sensitive to each other and sensitive to, and we're asking for wisdom to work through whatever decisions need to be made, working with staff and working with the community and this group here on this council, we just ask for your guidance and leading. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interim City Manager Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay, Shuddy?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Hollein?
Here.
Jorins?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Thank you.
Quorum is established. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda with one change. We are going to be removing item 9B off of the agenda for tonight. 9B, that's the IAFF contract. And with that change, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are now on to open forum. If there is anyone here who would like to address the council on something that is not on tonight's agenda, now is your time to do so. I'll close the open forum and we will go straight into item 9A, an approval of the 2025 to 2027 AFSCME collective bargaining agreement. We will go to our interim city manager, Kristin Bobzine.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, before the council tonight is our union agreement with AFSCME. Our HR Director, Darcy Nichols, is also up, she'll answer any questions. Before the council, though, some of the highlights of this agreement changes are, we had a change to the accrual for the vacation schedule while maintaining a 200-hour payout essentially and a carryover of the 200, so that was maintained. And then we also have kept the unused sick leave in excess of 600. The wage proposed is a 2% COLA with a step. Each one of our steps on our matrix is approximately 2%, so a 4% in total. And then we did have a change to the supplemental contribution. That's where the employee contribution, the employee has to contribute to the supplemental for the city to match it. So that did go, let's see, from, where were we? Max would be a 75 a month with an employee having to match 150. So if there's any other specific questions, Darcy and I can help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. HR Director Nichols, did you want to add something before?
No, I think that was a good summary.
Okay. Thank you very much. Please stand by for questions. But Chair will entertain a motion to approve the contract or the agreement. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Let's open it up for discussion. Counsel?
I have a simple question.
Councilman Jorins.
What is AFSCME? AFSCME?
The American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I'm sure the whole public knows that.
Councilman Danforth.
Okay. I don't want anybody to take this wrong. I know there's a lot of hard work on this, on all of these contracts. And I know that our employees are diligent from their side as well. But one of the questions that I have, and it pertains to any of these, is how do we, how do we validate and justify changes to a contract where we're expanding benefits? How do we, what's the basis for us saying, it comes to us usually as a request, how do we say that's a valid request based on something? Or do we, what's the process that's used? Because it seems like we have a benefit base that just creeps continually every contract.
Yep.
And I can't help but wonder how that is at this point in our city's lifespan of being in this business for so long. And how do we validate that it's warranted?
Well, we did have many, many requests in this process of negotiation. And I guess we've vet requests based upon other cities' benefit packages. So we look at what other cities are offering, what the state is offering, what the county's offering, and we try to make good give and take decisions with the employee groups.
So in any of these that we have expanded, any type of benefit in whatever manner that is, we have validated that against other municipalities?
Yep.
With the state to know what they're doing?
Yeah.
And that's our basis?
Yeah, that's what we do. Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion, counsel? Councilman Shuddy.
Well, again, I just want to appreciate, I appreciate the work that staff has been doing on this. And like others here, we appreciate the work the employees are doing. And they do deserve, you know, proper pay and proper balance of time off. I was, you know, today I made some phone calls with some staff and challenged about, you know, the number of hours and how we're going about doing this process. But in the end, in working through that and visiting and talking with some folks, I can see the reasoning behind it. So anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge that and share my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilman Jorins.
Whoops. I really have been an advocate of being competitive in the marketplace. Where I think the public gets a little bit questioning of things like this is when we're building buildings and we're buying office equipment, and then we're also seeing the uptick and there's never going to be a downtick. It's either going to be across or up. So I think that's where the challenges come from the public is, okay, now you're building new buildings, you're putting new equipment in the buildings, I'm sure the upkeep hasn't gone down, and now the payroll goes up. So that's, I think, a lot of, or at least the benefits goes up. So I think that's kind of some of the challenge. And then we just get an up or down vote. Now luckily, in this case, the two of you have really been informing us in the background of the work that you've been doing on it. So really appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilman Peters.
I have a question. I'm not sure if it's applicable here or not. But we try to stay competitive in Watertown as relates to employees. Do we know what our other neighboring communities are doing along these lines with a benefit package? And you don't have to have them off the cuff. I think the key here is that we see a lot of, you know, people going to Brookings and Aberdeen and, you know, all over the state, people switch jobs for better benefits. Are we competitive? Are we remaining competitive?
Yeah, I think we are.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions, counsel? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agreement. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Please call the roll.
Okay. Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Jorins?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to item 9C, an approval of the 2025 to 2027 WPOA collective bargaining agreement. Interim City Manager Bob Zine.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The same items are highlighted in terms of the vacation accrual, the payout, the carryover, all that. The wage is the same as we just covered with the AFSCME contract, also the contribution to the supplemental. The one adjustment here for the police department or WPOA is the increase of their assignment pay for their training officers. That's went from 65 a month to 90 a month. Otherwise, there was no other changes within that contract. So if there's any questions, we can answer them.
Director Nichols?
Yeah, there are no other changes, and that financial impact on the assignment pay is $1,600 a year difference. So.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agreement? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Questions and comments, counsel? All right, hearing none, motion is to approve the WPOA agreement. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bobzine?
Okay. Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Jorins?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 9D is an authorization to accept the three-year proposal from Ida Bailey LLP and for the interim city manager to execute the engagement letter and all other necessary documents with Ida Bailey LLP for the 2024 audit. Finance Officer Bobzine.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so this is a little bit different. This is a tough one. So William Neal will not be our auditor. Troy reached out to me and they are stepping away from the audit piece. So with that being said, I reached out to Aberdeen and Brookings, knowing that we had a little bit of a short timeframe to do this. Normally, I probably would have went out for an RFP, but I relied on some of the other communities that I work with, and they all are working with Ida Bailey. Our school district also works with Ida Bailey as well. So I felt very comfortable. So I did have a conversation with them, and they provided the proposal that's in front of the council at this time. Essentially, what it is, is it's a three-year proposal, and this action would give me the authority to enter into the engagement for 2024's audit. A little bit of a breakdown, it is a cost increase essentially. We're looking at probably needing to supplement the budget, about $30,000 is my estimate. Some of that comes with Ida Bailey has a technology fee that they charge. They also break down when we have what's called a single audit. That's anytime we get federal funding over $750,000. We have to have a specific audit on those programs, and that has a little bit extra cost to it. So it's a little bit unknown until we get into it, but I think at the high end, we'd be looking at a $30,000 increase to what was budgeted for '25. I guess that kind of covers it. If there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bueller, can I get a motion first, or is there, okay. Can I get a motion to authorize the agreement and execute the letter? Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Peters. Councilman Bueller?
Yes, this goes for Kristin.
Thanks. I've only been doing this for about, what, 90 years?
Twenty years.
Years or something? No, the audit, the price, and we're in a three-year contract with them, is that what we're doing?
Yep.
So we couldn't go out and look for a better discount next year.
No, we would, this would be to accept that three-year proposal, and then each year I'll be bringing forward an engagement letter. So part of, part of the issue with that is, with us just starting with a new auditor, that first year is going to be really just them even learning. So I don't, for me, this is just my opinion, I see the true benefit of at least giving it three years before you're even really able to determine what your relationship with that audit firm is, because they're going to be just getting used to our financials and all that we do. So that's why I looked for the three-year proposal. And I will say too, I did talk with Adam at Utilities in terms of this too. So, because they are part of our audit. So.
Councilman Peters?
I'm assuming the answer is no, but I have to ask, does this have to go out for bid?
No.
It does not?
Nope. So this is a professional service. You, you can enter into any professional service. Like I said, our normal practice would have been to go out for an RFP for multiple audit firms. But with me not getting notified until late October and knowing that I need to have the audit starting, I felt like, just to reach out to some of my other municipalities that I work with, and they all liked Ida Bailey. So that was kind of the direction I took.
Any further questions or comments? Councilman Tupper?
Looking at the total price of this, I just went through, excuse me, got to bear with me there. I just went through a similar deal with another organization I belong to that's probably 10, 15% size of the city, and that's about exactly what we're paying for a year. So this is a very good value for that. So.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further comments, counsel? The motion is to authorize the proposal and to execute the engagement letter and all other necessary documents. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bobzine?
Okay. Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Jorins?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to item 10A, a first reading of an ordinance zoning text amendments to summary of district regulations associated zoning districts, overlay districts, modular homes provisions, manufactured home provision, daycares, homes, and definitions of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown. We will go to our Public Works Director, Von I.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the next five items, thank you, Lisa, are all interrelated to some degree. They're all zoning text amendments. I'll give a brief, set the table here for what these are about, and then our community development manager, Hampton, will help talk in more detail about what some of the changes are. First, I'd like to thank the staff for all the work they put into this. Brandy herself, along with several of her staff, and then several of the other staff throughout the city have chimed in to some degree or another on some of these changes. What I'd like in these two are the engineering design standards amendments that were recently made. Our zoning ordinance is another regulatory tool that we use here at the city that helped guide the development of our community. So the zoning ordinance generally tells people what is allowed to be done on their property that they own within the city limits. And then subsequent to that, we have the subdivision regulations, which is chapter 24, which does not have anything to do with what we're, but it's another one of our regulatory documents. The subdivision regs pretty much say how they can accomplish what they want to do on their land. The public infrastructure that needs to be built, how it needs to be platted, things of that nature. And then the third leg of that stool is our engineering design standards that say this is how the public infrastructure needs to be built in order for the city to take it over. So we're talking about that first one tonight, the zoning ordinances in relation to how we govern the land uses throughout our community. And like with any of those regulatory documents, those three that we use regularly to steer development, they from time to time need to be updated. There's things that just become antiquated over time. There's new innovative ways of thinking and applying regulations on how we develop our community. There's ways to add more protections for neighboring property owners. There's also ways to add more leniency for the landowner to have more freedom to do what they want with their land. And so I think what Brandy and her teams have done is an excellent job of a balance of that, where we want to have enough regulatory language in place to protect each landowner from what their neighbors are doing, but also enough free will, if you will, to be able to do what people want to do on their land. Some of this also has to do simply with how we make our processes more efficient, how we look at and process applications, and how we can do so in a way that is most streamlined or most productive and all coherent to a expedited development review process. So with all of that background and context, these next five action, well, they're not action items tonight, they're all first readings. They've all been through the planning commission as required because they are chapter 21 zoning ordinance changes. Oh, the other component I was going to explain briefly, zoning amendments come in two forms, a text amendment, which is, means we're changing the words in the ordinance, and then also a map amendment, where we're shifting the actual zoning map to say this land is now blessed as this type of zoning district. All these five items here tonight are all specific to zoning text. They're all amending the zoning ordinances as they're filed in our codified ordinances for the city. So again, with that, there are a lot of details in each one of these five sections, but what Brandy's generally done is lumped them together in five separate action items, where for the most part, each of the five are somewhat relatively interconnected in what those changes are doing and how they're impacting zoning regulation throughout the community. With that, defer to community development manager, Branton, and she can help expand on any details, along with my assistance as needed, as we go through each one of these.
Manager Hampton, did you want to add anything before we go?
Yeah, I can add some more, just like getting into, keeping it high level, but also keep, or giving some additional details. So thank you, Heath, for that introduction, and then Mayor and council. So this has been a large undertaking that kind of started when we were looking at, well, and we still are, with recodification. And then, but this is obviously separate to that, and it also is important that we are taking the time with the planning commission like we did, had a presentation and then brought it for action because it is a lot of information to digest. The good thing about it, though, is it's mainly clerical. There's not a lot of substantive changes because that's typically when we would do tasks, task forces or committees and do a deeper dive. Obviously, with any of these amendments, there's a lot of research and background that goes into them and reasoning. And for all the reasons that Heath had mentioned, but also eliminating the need for variances. So if you see recurring variances or just things aren't working or are being problematic to administering them, that's why these ordinances are ahead of you. So with title 24, or not title 24, ordinance 2424, this one is about the chart for the district regulations, and then the definitions are the large, the large issues with, or not issues, chapters of what we're looking at with this ordinance. So we're describing the district, so the different districts are broken down into the dwelling types. And before, there was just confusion with how, how to utilize or at what point to utilize the different type of zoning. So we get residential, your R1, R2, R2A. So just breaking those down so it's more specific and that they are tailored to the type of density that they are supposed to have. And then the definitions are another thing that were amended that are tied. So to make just consistency, reworked how those dwelling types are defined. So with that one, I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. This is a first reading, no reason to, no need to take actions. So therefore, let's open it up for questions and comments. Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you for clarifying that, because, you know, having to miss the Vikings game last night to read 130 pages of this.
You did not miss anything.
It depends, are you a Vikings fan?
You did not miss anything.
So, but like on this, as I was looking through it, is it basically, you mentioned clerical, or is there redundancies? Because, yeah, just on page 23 of 130, the whole attached garage standards is crossed out. So I was wondering, is there, is it listed somewhere else? Or, you know, I guess just how does that, some of them is not just a word changing, it's literally, it looks like it's taking out the entire standard for attached garages. So I just was curious, your, how this works, the thought process? Because without taking the time to really look through it all, which we will, we trust your judgment, because that's what you're, you're doing the work on this. But for us to approve it, it's like, I'm just trying to make sure I'm looking at it, not just rubber stamping it, you know? And so I just want to get your clarification on that.
No, and I appreciate that. And actually, with that specific section, it's removed, it's relocated. So they had the provisions for attached garages under the accessory structures, the residential accessory structures, where it's like, it's an attached garage. It's still part of the primary. So just things like that of restructuring, reorganizing. So it's still in there.
Hey, all right, you bet. I was figuring that, but I wanted to clarify that. And then, but then also it mentioned on lakeside setbacks. I was just more curious. I used to have lake property. But on page 19 of 131, it talked about lakeside setback, about the shoreside, I believe, is considered the frontage, I believe, is what it said. And now that was, again, that was struck or removed. So again, just to clarify, what is, does that change how a house can be, where it can be positioned on a property? Or it doesn't. It's just, again, relocating the wordage and relocating the wordage somewhere else?
Yeah, so with that, actually, there was always confusion on interpretation. So, because of that whole, like, trying to combine the language for, when you usually have a front yard and a rear yard, and you have a front yard defined as something that is adjacent to public right-of-way, but then at the lake, the lakeside is the front, but then you actually still have a street on the rear. So, there was confusion about like inline provision or setbacks. So, just to clarify that, we actually just broke it into its own section, and just left accessory, residential accessory structures as their own section, and then just specifically talked about the lake properties and separated them.
All right, well, thank you. I guess it's obvious that Ms. Hampton has really done her work on this. She knows what she's doing, doesn't she? So, I appreciate your, your addressing that.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. Really, the, I gotta be honest, I watched the Vikings game, I didn't read this. I wish I'd have read it. Anyway, I have kind of gone through it lightly, but what I've really counted on it is, I've had a couple of instances where people have contacted me regarding the childcare changes, no, language. And I did watch the plan commission meeting, and I think there was a fair amount of discussion in that regard there. What I don't know is, is I go on page 74 of this, under daycare, home occup, or, yeah, home daycares. If you can, Ms. Hampton, are we adding or changing any of those requirements, or is this just clarification? What are we, what's specific to that section? What is the, the end result as to what's happening?
Yes, and thanks for bringing that up. I should have, because that was a major discussion point at the planning commission. There was a lot, well, and even just, you know, we, Councilman Tupper, and, well, it was just us two that addressed it on the radio, because there was just confusion with what this ordinance amendment was doing. And it is not, it's not changing anything that's already in ordinance. It's actually, everything that way stays the same. It's actually just creating an administrative process so that if they meet the three requirements, the two that have been in ordinance already, which is like the square foot, the interior and exterior square footage requirement for the structure, and then the off-street parking. And the only one that we added was the fence requirement, and we actually reduced it to just be four feet, because the main thing there is that if they are approved administratively, they are not having to go to the Board of Adjustment, so their neighbors aren't being notified, it's not a public hearing. So, just to try to protect the neighborhood from any intrusion that a business or a daycare operation would cause, that's the idea there. If they can't meet those three requirements, nothing changes, and they still would just go, they would go to the Board of Adjustment and have a hearing. So, it's just really trying to create a streamlined process.
The basis, Mayor, if I, if I may, so the basis behind that particular change, frankly, I think it'd be benefit to do this as many areas as we could without our zone, throughout our zoning ordinance related to conditional uses. So, home occupation, like a daycare, is a conditional use. It requires it to go to the Board of Adjustment for their determination if that use is okay on that property. So, what, what Brandy's done is tried to create an administrative, a staff-level approval of that function for daycares. So, if somebody comes in and wants to have a daycare on their property, and they meet ABC requirements, staff can go, here's your permit, have a nice day. Otherwise, they will still have to go to the BOA and go through the conditional use process, where they notify the neighboring properties, have a public hearing, and it's a little bit more of an egregious task to get that done. So, if we can have the right design criteria, the ABC checklist, for staff to be able to issue that administratively, it just streamlines the process in those scenarios. If they can't meet those criteria, then it's still up to the BOA to make the ultimate determination if that's the proper use on that property.
Councilman Danforth?
I can't, well, a couple of things in that regard. I'm all for simplification and speeding up the process, no question about it. But I wonder if we're taking the voice away from, from neighboring property owners to express their concerns, to do it administratively? Because I won't know about it until the fence goes up, right, and then little kids are running all over, well, I can't do anything about it. So, are we taking that voice away from them by having it go to the, the Board of Adjustment? The first question. Have we, have we denied in the past, as it's, as things have come to the Board of Adjustments, have we denied applications for daycares, in-home daycares? And if we have, what was the basis for that?
No, so we have not. There's just been different conditions on one particularly because of where they were able to access. It was on a busy street, on Third, and so then that they had a separate access point. And so, that was, that's the only one that's been questioned. And the applicant had to come back a year later, just as like a check-in, that was a condition of the approval. I do, those are valid points as far as the neighborhood. There is always still, though, the complaint process, where if they want to appeal staff's administrative decision, that could still, that's still a process, too, that, that eventually, if that were problematic, and there was something that the neighbor felt like was not met, or that they're having issues. I mean, there's all the, just complaint basis, that, we can always hear the concerns. The other thing, too, is, gosh, what is the number of daycares that we actually have that have received conditional uses? But I think it's been a, like, a lot of people, a lot of daycares that are in operation are not, do not have conditional uses. And I think that's why the daycare industry or group was unaware and thought that all of this was major changes because of the, the requirement to have a conditional use for your daycare in-home.
Follow-up?
Yeah, the last one, because this was a question that was asked of me, and I have no idea. How do the, the, the requirements that we have for the square foot, internally square foot outside, those are the two primary ones, how does that, how does that get established? Is that a standard that the state uses, and we just adopt it? How do those, where do those numbers come from? And I don't know, maybe that question has been asked of you, but it was of me, and I go, I have no idea. So, I said, I know, who knows? So, it's on your plate.
So, honestly, that has existed in ordinance. And because of doing this complete overhaul, I did not go into the details of that specifically, because I didn't want, if anything, I wanted to leave things the same and not cause any substantial changes of what existed in ordinance, and just to be able to do the clerical things. Now, I'm a part of the childcare task force, and we've had discussions of an administrative process, or just limiting the confusion for providers. So, that's kind of where the idea of, like, hey, we're going through this ordinance amendment, let's add an administrative process and do the things that would protect a neighborhood. So, the, the square footages have just existed in ordinance.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Councilman Beeler?
Hi, Brandy.
Hi.
Question, and then this, I think, goes to Heath as well. In regards to, again, back on just this one specific topic, and that's the approval for the conditional use for a daycare, you know, it's just one thing. But who has the final say-so? Who, at the end of the day, makes the final decision on whether or not that conditional use is okay?
Well, if it's a conditional use, then it will be the Board of Adjustment.
Let's say daycare, okay? But when I'm talking about administrative approval, who has the final say in that?
The Community Development Manager.
So, you, one person, okay? Because I, I have some of the same concerns that Mike has, you know, and I don't recall, you know, being on, on the planning commission, I don't recall that being, and Board of Adjustments, I should say, I don't recall that being a huge issue, you know, a lot of extra work for us in the past to deal with those things. My concern is that this gets down, and I, I trust your judgment, I absolutely do, but maybe I won't the next one. Or maybe somebody else has a vendetta against somebody that wants something in the community. That's a concern that I have. And so, what, you know, the opportunity for that to go to the, to the Board of Adjustments, I think, is...
And people can always appeal, staff's opinion.
Well, do, do we, will we communicate to that, that to them, then, in that, in that application? If they, if you deny it?
Yeah.
Say, okay.
Yep, that, they still have that option.
All right, that's good, thank you.
Yeah, and valid concerns there, too, and that is something that we try to avoid. We don't want any arbitrary or selective, and honestly, as a public servant, you shouldn't, like, everyone should be treated the same, but like you say, you never know who, who you have in different positions, so.
Read, if I may. You know, and this just kind of goes back years ago, I mean, not too many years back, we didn't have a consent agenda. I mean, every, all this stuff would have come to us. I mean, it's great, but every once in a while, we catch something in the consent agenda that we think needs to come forward in the agenda, the regular agenda. And so, I just, I get a little concerned when we start bringing these things down to one person's decision. Thank you.
Director Von Nye?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could address both Councilmen's questions, they're a little bit different context than what Brandy had mentioned. From the, from the concept of the neighbors being impacted, so that's where those criteria, the ABC, or however many we have listed, I think it's three or four, we tried to make as objective criteria as possible so that the decision-maker isn't having to put subjectivity into play. It's a black and white, do they meet this, yes or no? Do they meet that, yes or no? Do they meet this, yes or no? And they move on down that checklist of objective criteria. And the way those criteria were derived is what we were hoping to most impactfully minimize impacts to the neighbors, a fence, ample parking, things like that, that, you know, because an in-home daycare, it's going to cause a little bit more commotion, a little more ruckus on that property than what the neighbors are otherwise used to. So, that's why the objective criteria for it to be administratively approved were designed that way, to try to minimize as much as possible the impacts on the neighbors. So, I just thought I'd add that, for whatever that's worth, to the discussion.
Could I add one more thing, too? The other thing, as far as checks and balances go for staff administrative approval, I still report to the Public Works Director, and then the city manager, you know, so there's still, like, if I'm not doing my job, or if, you know, like, that way, there's checks and balances, too. So, just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Council, anything else? Councilman Shuddy?
Just more of a, of a question on this topic, but on the Board of Adjustment, Adjustment side of it. So, in someone else's experience in that area, if, if all these points are, you know, the, the fence height, and all the boxes are checked, if, let's say if we made it where it still went to the Board of Adjustments, what would be the reasoning for not approving it if, if every, I'm just trying, what, what's the decision? How is it met? If, if everything is in line, why would you, why would it even get denied? You know, so maybe, that's what I'm thinking, does this really go against that, that thought process? Is it, because they're not going to deny it, I wouldn't think, but unless there's other reasons why they would deny something like this besides the, the standard? I just, that's my question about Board of Adjustments and how that works.
Well, and I know former Plan Commissioner Beeler has a comment on this, but I would open it up for Manager Hampton first.
I'm sure Manager Hampton can answer this as well.
But I do know that we, we have two Councilmen who'd like to comment.
Board of Adjustments, I mean, they have to meet certain criteria for hardship, and they're, they are listed, they're, those items are listed by the, I think, I believe there's seven of those that are listed by the state. And some of them are a little bit gray, you know, for example, like, character of the neighborhood, you know, some of those kind of things. You know, that's why we need a Board of Adjustments, so they can make those determinations. But typically, if you go through those, that criteria, and it doesn't meet that criteria for hardship, then, you know, then, then you can, it can be denied.
So, this will be, this is for conditional use. So, then, the hardship is for variances. But the reason why you would go to the board, even if you have criteria, like, we have that for some uses already, like communal living, or the home occupation, things like that, where then, there's still a list of criteria that needs to be met, but then it has to go to the Board of Adjustment still as a conditional use, and that is really transparency. So, the neighbors, the neighbors get noticed, you put a public hearing out, that, that sort of thing.
Councilman Peters?
Real quick, I mean, I'm looking at this, I think it supplies any ordinance, and I sit on, you know, the other side of the bench a lot for my job, and we try to work in an ordinance that allows the utmost clarity. So, to the point of Councilman Shuddy of, well, you know, why would the Board of Adjustment deny it? That's kind of the goal of finding an ordinance that's so clear that it is hard to deny, because you want to have so much assurance in the ordinance that there isn't room for politics, or there isn't room for, well, misunderstanding, or whatever. So, yeah, I just, I thought about that as Councilman Shuddy brought it up, and I just want to make mention of that from the other side and the other perspective, than how we may see it.
Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, just the final one here. Well, first of all, you know, daycare is a big, big issue within our community and every community, but, you know, so we want to do what we can to support that. But you may mention, and we're going to get there, is the, for somebody that, that wants to have an, a in-home business that isn't a daycare, they must go to the Board of Adjustments for approvals, is that correct? So, what we're doing is we're taking an in-home business, one that is, in all likelihood, going to have some intrusion on neighborhoods, whether they like it or not, and we're taking the people's voice away from expressing concerns. We might approve it still, but we're taking their voice away. Whereas, if I want to have some other home occupation, I got to go to the Board of Adjustments. Well, if that's the case, why aren't we doing this administrative thing across the board, then? Because I might be doing something that, or want to do something that's far less intrusive overall than what a daycare may be, but yet I got to go to the Board of Adjustments. So...
Yeah.
Do you see where I'm coming from? It's like, we picked one out and said, it's the right thing to do, to make it easier, add clarity. Well, then, my logic says, well, why aren't we doing that with many or most of these, then, home occupations versus plucking one out and saying, we got an issue in the community and around that we need daycare, we want to make it easy, but, well, we also have an issue with, with people wanting to have businesses, and start businesses, and run businesses as effectively as they can. So, the logic to me says, okay, fine, let's try it, we can always change it if it doesn't work. But then, we should be expanding the logic of it to all in, in-home, to see what the standards are for people to not have to come back to, to the city for approvals, other than administratively, then.
Yeah, and I agree with that. And actually, the home occupation amendment is on a different, is on a different ordinance that will be coming forward. I think that it was just the immediate need, and the uses were already separated for knowing what the child, childcare action team's needs are, and then, just, so just focusing on that one. But you're right, home occupations and daycares are very much in the same wheelhouse. The only thing, though, with home occupations is that, like, day, in-home daycares are common. If somebody's doing another sort of business, and there's things that are not, you know, if you're working from home, you don't have to get a home occupation to have your office at home. You don't have to get a home occupation conditional use, so I'll finish my thought there. But if you're doing commercial, like, type of business, like retail or something, we would rather see you find a commercial space, because that is where businesses should go. And that's how our city is laid out. So, that's there on, but, I mean, we definitely could look at, I mean, there's a lot of things that it would be nice to create administrative approvals for. But then, there's still the, the things that are appropriate to go to the Board of Adjustment as a conditional use.
Thank you. I appreciate the effort to streamline the process in this and other regards as well. I'd also like to say to Council, or anyone in the community, if you have questions... I'd also like to say to Council or anyone in the community, if you have questions, I know that our WDC Director Chris Clifton and Cottington Connects Director Sarah Faust have been working a lot on the daycare issue in particular, and if you had questions on where the, the federal and state regulations come from and how it connects to possible funding, because we have licensed daycares, unlicensed daycares, state, you know, for state licenses and things like that, so, if you had questions, you sure could reach out to them for further clarification, or we could ask them to be here at the second reading. Any further questions on this item? Okay. Hearing none, unless there is an objection from Council, I'm going to shake up the agenda for a second. We have two gentlemen here who are waiting for Item 11A, and I wasn't sure how long all of these first readings would go, but, out of respect for their time, I know, they might, if you want to stay for all the first readings, you sure can, but I wanted to, I wanted to be respectful of your time and say, I know you're here, and I think that we could handle your item pretty fast, so unless there is an objection from the Council, I am going to go to Item 11A, which is an application for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license to Infinity Fund LLC, doing business as Infinity Fund LLC. Interim City Manager Bob Zine.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, before the Council is a new retail malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license. This location previously did have an alcohol license, so there was no requirement to go back to the Board of Adjustments because it's been within the year, so it did receive approval from the Community Development Department. All fees have been paid and notices have been published. If there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Officer Bob Zine, this is an extremely long description of where this location is. You said it has previously had a license. What is it? What would we know it has?
Studio 212.
Okay, thank you. For this, yeah. For the sake of the community and everyone involved, let's just say what it was. Gentlemen, you don't have to testify, I know that you were waiting here if we had any questions, but I thank you for being here. I'd be curious, I had seen some news as far as, by the way, I'm opening a, opening a public hearing. I know that there was, no, not yet, public hearing before Council action. So, if you'd like to say what you have planned for the facility, I'd like to give you the opportunity to speak to the community. Just please announce who you are.
So my name is Jared Paulson. I'm a business owner in Watertown. I own Smoke Solutions and Sandy's Bar at the moment, and I took over the Studio 212 building with the intentions of doing, so I got some trampolines, we got a Valor Arena, a laser tag, there's four lanes of duck pin bowling, there's a big soft play for the kids, there's a 35 game, arcade game starting out, and then we'll have, like, a, we'll, starting out with a medium-sized kitchen, but with the intent to have like a full, full-size kitchen. So, that's on, we have, have two, there's a, nine holes of Lucky Put and 10 holes of Black Light Mini Golf as well. So there's kind of, kind of a lot going on.
Very cool. I just want, I get asked about trampolines a lot, but also just a place for families and, and kids of all age to go, ages to go, so thank you.
Yeah, I'm surprised there's nothing, hasn't, I mean, I've had this, I've had this dream for, I don't know, 10 years now, and I'm just surprised that no one's brought anything to town, so I'm glad to be able to finally do it.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Paulson. Anyone else who would like to testify publicly on this item? All right, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, open up for Council action. Can I get a motion to approve the application?
Council move.
We'll go Councilman Bueller, seconded by Councilman Danforth. You guys okay with that? Okay. Any questions or comments, Council? Councilman Peters?
I don't know if I heard, when do you guys open formally?
Trying for March.
March, okay, sounds good, thanks. I have a son that turns two in January, but don't worry, we'll go somewhere else.
He's two, he won't remember if he pushes back, birthday back a couple months. Any further questions or comments? Councilman Shuddy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Paulson, a question for you, if you don't mind. You know, we've had discussions about, I mean, I appreciate what you guys are doing, it's going to be a great asset to the community. It sounds like you've got all ages, all types of, you know, venues for people, so part of me pictures, though, if some of it's for younger ages, that they're going, it's like having alcohol at a Chuck E. Cheese, you know what I'm saying? So, is there a way, are you separating it out a little bit?
I'm not.
In the layout of the room, or?
In a way, yes, but, I mean, it'll also be limited to, you know, it's not going to be like a bar where you can just go drink unlimited, you know, it'll be, what, kind of monitor, you know, people, and it's not, I don't know, it's more of an in-and-out, you come, you have a couple, you do some bowling, or you do some mini golf, you have a couple beers, you're gone, you know, it's not like a sit-down, you have a case of beer kind of deal, so, yeah, we, with the intent of, you know, keeping it safe and stuff, yeah, we do have, we'll have it safe to where it's not, you know, a bar, bar kind of scene, I guess, if you want to say.
All right, thank you for clarifying that, that was just, yeah, one of my concerns. We've had discussions in the past about youth and activities and alcohol sales, and where is that balance, so, that's, then it should be a concern, so I appreciate you making that a concern, too.
Yep.
Yeah.
Councilman Jurens?
So families in Watertown have been asking about this for a while, so thank you guys for coming up with the idea and making it work. It'd be really cool if everybody supported this. It, it allows a lot of families to not have to drive, or it doesn't force them to drive 90 to 100 miles to Sioux Falls to, to do this now, so, there's a lot of, lot of, lot of people that have talked about this for a while, and appreciate the, the momentum, and it's good to get the word out.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for, no, I called you up on the spot, you didn't have to testify, but I wanted to give you that opportunity to speak to the public.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Any further questions or comments, Council? The motion is to approve the application, all those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Interim City Manager Bob Zine?
Okay. Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Good luck, thank you.
Good luck.
All right, we are going to go back to Item 10B, a first reading of an ordinance 24-17, zoning text amendments to Chapter 2180, signs and outdoor advertising of the revised ordinances of the City of Watertown.
Director Vannay?
I'll just go directly to Community Development Manager Hanon on this one, she can talk any details on this section.
Manager Hanon?
All right, thank you. So this one is pretty much clerical of just running, or just the different provisions that we have found problems with in ministering, confusion in the interpretations is the, the main things here. We have, actually, what, what we would ask, though, is with this first reading, if we can strike the language, or actually keep it in there where it says no on-premise signs may be converted to an off-premise sign without approval of the Sign Code Board of Appeals, so, we actually had some, a sign company reach out and just have, present their concern if we would strike that, and so there's no issue with leaving it, because we've never had that come forward anyway, but they, they just saw concerns with that being potentially a loophole for, because there's certain distance required between off-premise signs. So, if they weren't coming to the Board, then nobody would be getting noticed, and so then they, they just felt like that could be problematic. And staff agrees where it's not a big deal, like I said, we've never encountered it, so there's no, we see no reason of striking it. Staff's original thought process with it was that they, since we've never had it, and if they're meeting all the requirements, why not? Just allow them to convert it with another, with the building permit, but, yeah, so, but we just asked that it stay in there.
Manager Han, if, if we retain that language, is that referring to an obsolete board? Do we just need to crack the board that it would be referred to, not the one that currently listed?
Yeah, so the board, we do still reference the signed code Board of Appeals in the ordinance, but it is the Board of Adjustment.
So I think that was my point of clarity, is we should call it out as the Board of Adjustment, not the signed Board of Appeals, in my opinion, I think that'd be the utmost clarity to the situation, because I don't think in six and a half years I've ever seen the signed Board of Appeals ever convened, so, if we just call it out as the Board of Adjustment.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd suggest possibly changing that for the next time, but...
Yeah.
Just for clarification.
Yep, I can do that.
Before I open it up to the rest of the Council, just want to ask, we're, Watertown has a lot of sign companies, both very large and of the smaller size variety, but a lot of people are very concerned about so, signs in this town, and I know that you're aware of that. Were they consulted on this, or rather, did you just take what you have gleaned from your years of experience with the city and taken the, you know, the complaints, the issues, and factored that in?
Yes, so this one, the reason why, like I said at the beginning, if we were going to do a deep dive and, and look at changing things substantially, we would, you know, with Council's direction and Planning Commission of putting together a task force to review and, and be a part of it, like, we did the last time, I think in 2018, when we updated the sign code, we had all the, the industry partners and particip, or the stakeholders be a part of those meetings, when we did that overhaul, I think in 2017, so, that is why, because all of this was not supposed to be a substantial change, just the clerical things that staff has encountered over the years.
Thank you, and I wanted to clarify that because I didn't want this to turn into another daycare situation, because this isn't opening up the sign ordinance, I know that, I think we have one councilman here who, possibly two, were you on it as well, Councilman Bueller? Yeah, and a lot of work was put into that, and I know that there has been issues, but far and away, a lot of the times, there's, when complaints have come, the reasons behind the rules have come forward, and they usually stand pretty firm and strong and are justified, but I wanted to just make that clear, so if any sign company has an issue, say something now instead of waiting for it. So, open it up for any, any other questions, comments from the Council. All right, we'll go to Item 10C, first reading of an ordinance 24-929, zoning text amendments to Chapter 2182, home occupations, Chapter 2174, specific use office building, Chapter 2175, bed and breakfast, Chapter 2176, campgrounds, Chapter 2177, wireless communication towers, Chapter 2178, communal living, and Chapter 2179, swimming pools and the revised ordinances of the City of Watertown. Manager Hanon?
All right, so a lot of these, this grouping of ordinance amendments are very much clerical to the point of, it's just really formatting, of changing the, the wording between calling it the titles, just have, just creating consistencies, instead of, you'll see on here that there's, you know, it's just formatting, truly. And then the only thing that is substantial to this grouping of, in this amendment, is you'll see there's a lot of amendments, it, it looks like, or it appears to be, for the swimming pool section, and that is because we moved it from Title 11, which was the health standard section in ordinance, because there, and then kind of struck any items that actually pertain to health, and then just included the areas that were, that were related to the zoning components of, like, setbacks and distance and all of that. So, it just was odd that it, those components weren't a part of Title 21, it doesn't come up very often, it's just one of those things, looking through ordinance, or knowing that we've had to reference it before, and these are for permanent pools, so, that is, but otherwise, no major changes, they're just moving it from Title, Title 11 into Title 21.
Thank you. First reading, any questions or comments? Councilman Shuddy?
All right, so yeah, yes, on the pool item, when you mentioned permanent pool, so I guess the point of clarification is that, you know, some of these just seasonal, above-ground, you know, 16-foot circle type of, with a, with a circulation-type pump, is that considered a permanent or not a permanent? That would not be counted?
Nope, anything that is not in the same location for six months, or is not located on the property for more than six months. So like the seasonal pools, now if somebody had a, you know, hard shell pool that actually like stayed up year-round, well, then it does start to function as more of a structure, so then they would need a permit.
Okay, and I noticed you moved it from eight feet, I think, to nine feet away from the property line on that, so is that, that's, I suppose, is that so someone doesn't jump over a fence and into the pool or something, I would assume, or?
It's actually just consistency for side yard setbacks, because, I mean, a pool can be intrusive, and there's no necessar, well, they need a fence around it, but, yeah, so it's just a, really, that was consistency.
Sure. To that nine feet, Brandy would be comparable to a lawn shed setback.
Or a detached garage.
So, to try to not have to dig into, okay, for this, it's this many feet, for that, it's that many feet, instead, it's just all consistent.
All right, yeah.
Ease of application.
Thank you.
Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. In regard to home occupations, the one thing that I have had, not as of late, but over the years, have had questions of, and again, I don't know the answer to these, and so I don't know if it's, if it's covered anywhere in our ordinance or not, but there's certain types of home occupations, and the, the three that come to mind that, that have a tendency to create a level of concern within any residential area is somebody that's got a construction business running out of their house, okay? So they got their trailer, they got their couple trailers, a bobcat, they got a tool trailer, they, then, and then you've got lawn care, and you got snow removal. And, and I understand why they want to, in a, in a number of cases, be able to work out of their homes, because they get a call, they leave, they go to the job, they come home. The problem is, is that all that equipment sits out there.
It's industrial in nature.
How do we, and I, I see it, how do we, do we intend to manage that differently, protect the neighboring homeowners? Because these are in residential areas that this is occurring, how is, Brandy, how is that, how should that be done, and, and what, what are requirements in those areas?
Yeah, so they would, it's complaint basis, so if this was happening and somebody did not come forward, because most of the times they don't for home occupations, and they're brought to us as a complaint basis when it does create issues in, in a neighborhood, but like that, it's obvious when they have too much, too many vehicles for what's allowed for like off-street parking, and then even what they're parking on the street, so, a business like that, I mean, they really should, yes, it's convenient, everybody would love to run their business out of their, out of one place where they live and work, that's ideal, but it's not ideal for a residential neighborhood, so that is why those types of businesses should be in a industrial or commercial by conditional use. And so that would be, we can notify them if that type of operation is happening, and it might be somebody that starts small and then they've grown and they, and, yeah, well, then you need to move your business. And if you are going to run a business that does not meet the criteria for when a home occupation conditional use is not required, then you need to get a conditional use.
I mean, because we do have a requirement that says that they can't have outside storage, et cetera, et cetera, right? But yet that's what you have. You've got pickups and, and trailers and equipment, all the really cool stuff, but then it's just inundating the street parking and yards.
Yeah.
And, and you're right, I, you know, I understand why they want to do it, it's cheaper for them, it's more effective, I get it, and I don't want to impede that, but it, it really can become a neighbor, we're looking to pit neighbors against neighbors, unfortunately, on a, on a complaint basis scenario. So, I was just curious as to where we're at on, I do agree that most likely, they don't even have a, a permit to operate out of their home, probably.
Right, and that's the other thing, any complaint, we do keep confidential, now obviously neighbors can prob, like, there's only a select few of people that it could be, that they would assume, but we never disclose that, because our goal is to eliminate or reduce any neighbor, neighborhood issues, so, that's, that's a big one there, so people So that's, that's a big one there. So people can feel comfortable that what, if there is something, because that's what we're here for, is to remedy any issues that are causing them harm on, at their, at their home.
Any further questions or comments? All right, item 10D is a first reading, first reading of ordinance number 24-30, zoning text amendments to chapter 2160, required yards and open space, 2161, fences, walls, and hedges, 2160, 6304, off-street parking and loading requirements, 2165, outside storage and display requirements for specific uses, and chapter 21.67, landscape and lighting standards of the revised ordinances of the City of Water Town. Manager Hanton.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So again, a lot of these are non-substantive. Obviously, the fences jumps out, there's a lot of changes happening there. However, they all should be positive because if you recall previously, or actually currently, we, there's just not a lot of substance to what is required for fences, walls, and hedges. And they also can be very sensitive. They can cause a lot of issues. So this is just creating more guidance, and it keeps everything the same of what, what has been required as far as heights. And then it, but it just offers, just, it really, it lays out, like, we talk about the Clearview Triangle. Like, those are things that exist today, but they're just, those details weren't in this chapter. So this just provides more, greater detail.
Thank you. Let's open it up for discussion. Councilman Shuddy.
You've got to think I have nothing better to do than read these ordinances, right? I'm on the library board, they're kind of rubbing off on me. So anyway, no, on the fences, I've always, for years, I always felt the ordinance was that the finished side has to be facing the neighbor, then I was told that's not an ordinance. Then I noticed, I believe, on this change here, is it on there? I read it somewhere. I don't have it documented where I read it, but that the finished side is to face now, the, that's a change now this year, correct?
Yes. So it's kind of like common courtesy that you do that. But this actually requires it, and it was actually, you know, like, the idea is the, like, the assumption of common courtesy, that you have the finished side face outward. But we actually ran into an issue two years ago now. And yeah, nothing was in ordinance, so we couldn't require anything.
All right, thank you for that. And it did also say something about, well, 12 inches, I believe, from the lot line are within, there's a 12-inch mark, but it said you have to be able to access your, you know, the other, the outside of it to be able to maintain and repair or something like that. But with 12 inches, you can't really, you can't really, you know, you've got to be on the neighbor's property. So how do you, you know, how does that work, you know, in the, in the location of the fence and painting it, staining it, and but you're six inches on the lot from the lot line or something?
So typically, we would hope that you would have a good relationship with the neighbor. So the idea of us suggesting that, because ideally, you would be able to use one fence panel for two yards. But in the case where your neighbor, that you have a neighborhood dispute, and then the other neighbor doesn't let you get to the backside to maintain your fence if you need to, then that's the idea there. But I mean, ideally, if you, because otherwise, if each of your, if you and your neighbor put a fence up and then you just have this two feet of dead space that somebody has to hopefully fit their mower in, or it's just overgrown, so.
I figured it was, you know, this neighborly usually wins out, but I just, it caught my eye. I was like, how do you do that in 12 inches? But, you know, being able to maintain your fence. But anyway, all right, thanks.
Councilman Danforth.
Yeah, the only question I have here is, I know years ago, you were probably in daycare at that time, but, years ago, a previous one, and somebody reached out to me, their neighbor had put up a fence, side yard fence between them, and it was seven feet tall. And it felt like they were being overran by this seven-foot-high fence, and I don't blame them. It seemed ridiculously high. Has there been any discussion of why we need seven-foot fences in residential areas?
Honestly, so that's just what has existed. But again, usually panels are six feet, you know?
Unless you, usually, the problem is, is when you make a fence, you can make it as high as you want.
Yeah.
And that's what these people did. And it exists today, and it's like, boy, seven feet is a really high fence.
So should we bring, should we?
It feels like we've got a prison.
Should we bring it to six?
I just, I'm just only bringing that up because the one time that it's been brought, I looked at it and went, wow. It just, you know, especially when it is a solid fence. Now, I can understand a seven-foot fence when it's bars or something. That's not, you know, or it's got a sizable amount of permeation to it. But boy, a solid fence at seven feet high.
Their neighbor is six foot six or something.
Brandy, do we keep the maximum, do we keep the maximum height in there somewhere? Did it get relocated?
Yeah, so it, it's just right here. Can you see the screen?
No, I'm sorry, I can't.
So yeah, we, we did.
All right, just verifying that. Councilman Peters?
Well, on Councilman Danforth's example, so when we did our fence in our backyard, we started off at like five and a half, and to keep our lines straight on the top, our backyard drops like a foot and a half, so it does go to seven in the backyard, because it slopes so bad. So yes, we need seven feet, but don't bring your tape measure out because I'm not actually sure if it's under seven feet or not.
Councilman Shuddy. At first, I wasn't sure. You also said like bars on the fences, and I had to go, oh, wait, there are fences that are just bars. Councilman Shuddy.
Well, on the height, Mike, if you, or Councilman Danforth, if you ever have me as your neighbor, you'd want a seven-foot fence. I am a fan of the seven-foot just because, yeah, I can stand there and right look over the six-foot fence, so.
Those of us who are heightened challenged on the council, object. Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. Brandy, I have a question. And this actually happened, this, I know this happened to some people I know. There was a fence built and the neighbor kind of torqued him off a little bit. So they painted all kinds of crazy things on the neighbor-facing side. Is, how do we handle, I didn't say that. How do we handle that?
So if the fence is set back, you know, six inches to a foot, then they would be trespassing. I mean, honestly, it's still, that's, it's just a tough one because like, I feel like that's more of a legal issue or like something that the cops would have to handle.
Because somebody at some point would have to determine. I mean, it could be offensive, too, you know?
Is that a pun?
Offensive, when you pick right up on them.
All right. I applaud you for trying to make our fence ordinance at least better. I know that I have been involved in some of the disagreements regarding fences, and some of them have gotten extremely vitriolic between neighbors to the point where police officers have been called out to keep the peace because there have been threats of physical harm to people. So try to get along well with your neighbors. It's best advice. Good fences make good neighbors, as Robert Fosse said, so. Item 10E is a first reading of an ordinance 24-28, zoning text amendments to chapter 2101. Purpose, chapter 2102, administration and enforcement, and 2103, general provisions of the revised ordinances of the City of Water Town. Manager Hanton.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So again, a lot of clerical things, creating, you know, just honestly rewording how some of these, like, what we're talking about for extensions of building permits, just clarifying. And then the main thing, though, and this is what I thought was kind of interesting going through this ordinance, is that it's always, it's just, it's set, or it's understood without really being clearly stated in ordinance that you cannot have an accessory structure without a primary structure. But we made sure to make that very clear as far as, so you can't have a detached garage without having a house on a lot. Same reason why you can't have a camper on a lot without a house. And that just because if you want to camp, then you have to go to a campground. And, but also, this is, this has come up with different people that are building a house, that are doing it throughout the summer, they'd like to live in their camper on their lot during the construction. And so that we are allowing with, we've written it into ordinance to say, a recreational vehicle for temporary residential living quarters for the property owners shall be allowed on lots with an active building permit during the construction of the primary residence. So that way, we know that they have a building permit, they are in the process of building a house. Now, if that would be taken advantage of, and they never started construction throughout the year, and they're just wanting to camp at their lot at the lake or whatever, we would obviously keep tabs on that. But this way, you know, if people, especially when they demolish their house on the lot that they're building on, it just, if they can make it work and can live in a camper while they have an active building permit, we feel like that's permissible.
Thank you. Let's open it up for discussion. Counsel, anything? All right, item 11B is an approval of a resolution 25-01, levying assessments of the sidewalk curb and gutter and asphalt surfacing improvements. Director Von Nye?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is in relation to the public improvements that the city initiated through a resolution of necessity, similar to what we would do for sidewalk repairs or things of that nature, sidewalk assessments. This happened to be for more than just the sidewalk, it included sidewalk, but also some curb and gutter, some asphalt surfacing out into the roadway, and a driveway apron into the private property. This is adjacent to the Ruins Apartments, previously known as the Palace Apartments. It's that stretch along Kemp Avenue there where the construction progress had halted for quite some time to the point where we needed our public infrastructure put back into place so that we had adequate pedestrian connectivity through that segment adjacent to that building. And back in July, we issued the resolution of necessity, which then allowed us to carry out the work. This is the final step, which then files the assessment at the courthouse, which the finance office helps the engineering division go through that process and gets it formally on the books so that that's clear that that money is owed back to the city for that work. The cost of this work totaled in the amount of, I just had it here, 35, let me find the exact number, $37,454.90, which equated to $293.53 per linear foot of work that occurred adjacent to this property. With that, City Engineer Peterson's in the room. He helped carry out much of this work, and he and I will stand by for questions.
Thank you very much. I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this item? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for counsel action. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, second by Councilman Beeler. Open it up for discussion, counsel. All right, hearing no comment. I feel satisfied with just a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the resolution, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're on to item 11C, J.C. Harper First Edition Annexation and Zoning. These are two separate motions. We'll vote on them separate, but we will talk about them together. Item one is an approval of a resolution initiating annexation of attractive land contiguous to the City of Water Town. And number two is second reading of an ordinance establishing the zoning designation of I-1 Light Industrial District for the property to be known as J.C. Harper First Edition. We'll go to our Assistant City Manager Von Nye.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I've shared my map to Teams, I don't know if this pulled up or not. So this, this black-hatched area is the area in question on these two action items. This would be for annexing this strip of land and then also zoning it the requested I-1 zoning designation. This does go hand in hand with the next action item on the agenda, which then rezones a portion of this R2 yellow shaded area to match the I-1 zoning designation. I wanted to point that out because if you were to approve this and not the next one, that, that would defeat the whole purpose of everything. This is all one group, series of events that are all interconnected with the intent of the landowner. So this little strip of land was needed in order to meet the sizing and frontage requirements in our zoning ordinance. So the landowner is proposing to annex this and zone it the appropriate I-1 designation. And then the adjoining land that's currently zoned I-2 on the next action item would be proposed to be zoned I-1 as well. With that, I'll stand by for any questions from, from the council, along with Manager Hanton.
Thank you. I'll open a public hearing on these items. Is there anyone who would like to testify on these items? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for counsel action. Can I get a motion on item 11C1? Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Beeler. I will allow questions, comments on both items together. We'll vote on them separate. Is there any comments on either of these? Hearing none, the motion will be to approve the 11C1, the approval of the resolution initiating annexation. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11C2, the, is the second reading of the ordinance, the zoning designation. Any comments on this, counsel? Councilman Danforth?
The only question I have is that narrow strip, as it's going north alongside the residence, is that going to stay as industrial? I mean, it can't be used for anything other than?
Yeah, that, that portion would essentially, Manager Hanton could confirm this for me, but that strip, that narrow strip would be undevelopable. The main reason for that is simply for the access, and so they have adequate access frontage along 14th Avenue. But that narrow of a strip, you know, as far as a building getting set in there, would be impractical and wouldn't meet our zoning requirements and setback requirements. But the other development or improvements on the land would occur further south where the lot then widens out. What we're ending up with, obviously, is a little bit of a flagpole-shaped lot here, and the pole portion of that flagpole would simply be for access purposes.
Can I follow up with, so is the, not that it matters, just curiosity question, but, so is the intent on that, on that land that's to the south that will become replatted, where platted, added to, and then rezoned, is there plan to access that from the north?
Correct.
And not from Highway 20?
Correct, to be off of 14th Avenue.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions? So item 11C2 is the establishment of the zoning designation of I-1 Light Industrial. We'll have to call the roll on that, so, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, sorry. We do, we do need a motion on item 11C2, so, made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Okay, thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? Unless there's an objection, I feel comfortable going to a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11D is a second reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Water Town for a portion of property to be known as J.C. Harper First Edition from R2 Single Family Attached Residential District to I-1 Light Industrial. Director Von Nye?
Thank you again, Mayor. This is the westerly portion that we just spoke of. Again, I've shared my map to screen, my map to Teams should be on the screen. But the land parcel outlined in turquoise here, that's yellow shaded, currently zoned R2, this is the second. This is the second and final reading to rezone this, um, to be equivalent to the adjacent I-1 zoning, uh, to match also the strip of land that we just took action on.
Thank you very much. I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for council action. Can I get a motion to approve the zoning amendment? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Any questions or comments, counsel? Hearing none, the motion is to amend the zoning map of Watertown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And just to note, if I don't hear you say aye, you're going down as a yes. So, because if you're present. Item 12A is an approval of a resolution 25 dash 03, giving approval to the issuance by city of Watertown, South Dakota, of its drinking water surcharge revenue bond, series 2025, in the amount not exceeding three million, four hundred thousand dollars to finance directly and indirectly construction of improvements to the city drinking water system, approving the form of loan agreement and revenue bond, authorizing the sale of said revenue bond, pledging drinking water surcharge revenues for servicing debt issued hereunder, and the manner of execution and issuance of said bond. So, Adam, do you want me to go to you first or?
You sure?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a mouthful.
Adam Karst from the Watertown Municipal Utilities.
Yes, sir. Good evening, uh, Mayor, counsel. As you guys recall, you know, we went through four grants and four loans in twenty, in two thousand and twenty-two for all of the water projects and you guys went ahead and did some sewer projects as well. So we're asking for the last project. We were approved for four. This is the cast iron replacements project. So it's a four-point-nine million dollar project. We're going to get thirty percent of it in a grant. So around a million and a half is going to be a grant through the South Dakota DNR. Um, so we're asking for the balance. In order to get that grant, you need to borrow the rest of the money and that's about three point four million. So what are we borrowing it for? As you guys see, if you have the, do you have the resolution up on, can we put the resolution up on the, on the screen, please? Thank you, sir. If you, if you could go through, if you could get in the resolution, I'm just going to make a couple of notes, but... Oh, sure. You're going to let me drive? All right. Thank you. Yeah, sorry about that. But what are we to get, what are we going to do? We're going to replace about twenty-eight thousand feet of pipe. So what's this going to do? We have sixteen thousand feet of six inch, about eight thousand of eight inch, four thousand of sixteen inch. And we're going to increase, that's going to increase our flows. That's going to increase our water quality to, to our customers. And actually, Don's going to be happy too. It's going to increase, uh, fire flows as well. So that's what we're doing with the money. Um, so what we need to do, Watertown Utilities cannot borrow funds. It needs to go through the city. So the, our board, Watertown Utilities Board passed a resolution on the thirtieth asking for approval from this body. And so this three point four million dollar loan is going to be for thirty years at one point eight seven five percent interest rate. So it's going to be very attractive interest rate. And so we have to set a surcharge. We set that up. So one thing I want this body to note is that the security that's pledged for this, for the bond or for this debt issuance has nothing to do with the city's debt obligation. It's totally secured by sales of water revenue. So we set a surcharge on our drinking water sales to pay for this loan. So it amounts to about ninety-three cents a month for, for a residential customer and that's what it's going to be used for, to pay for the debt service. So nothing's going to go against the debt obligation of the city. So wanted to make that known. That's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Adam, what's your title?
Uh, Director of Administration.
Okay. So Director Karst, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
I like being official with the titles, so, um, ICM Bobzine, did you have anything to add?
No, nothing to add. Everything's kind of in line and it's straightforward. Same thing that we've done with our wastewater bonds. Yep.
And Director Karst, I want to thank you. I know everyone here no, understands the relationship that we have with the municipal utilities in the city of Watertown, but not everyone in the city understands the relationship that we have because you're a separate entity, kind of. But also with the city. So, uh, thank you for explaining that for people. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Motion made by Councilman Beeler, seconded by Councilman Peters. Open it up for discussion, counsel. Councilman Jerns?
One question from the public. Um, replacing cast iron with PVC and the plastics and I'm sure you've heard it. I've never heard of it, but I've got some articles that I started reading and I'm like, let's let Adam just, he's, he's been through this before. Uh, you know, do they need a reverse osmosis system? What, what, what's the conversation we have with, with someone that's concerned about plastics in their water and their health?
Well, that's a good question. There is something that we are, we're looking into as things as far as looking at with engineering on different things to treat, on different things. As, as we all know, there's other things out there as far as more regulations on the EPA standards. We keep up with that. We hire a consulting engineer AE2S. I think you guys do some work with AE2S as well, as far as looking at different items in the water. I can't specifically answer that question. Um, I think that's more of a technical question that I would leave to some of the experts, but it is something on our radar that we have people looking into. So if there is any specific questions on that, I'd encourage them to call us and we can get into those details with them and answer that question.
Councilman Beeler?
Uh, Director Karst, just a quick question for you. How long does this surcharge last?
It's a thirty-year, the loan is thirty years. Now, let's say, so we set rates, so how we set a surcharge is you look at your annual rates and sometimes your water sales are less than you budgeted for and sometimes they're more depending on the weather, right? Um, so if the sales are higher than what we anticipated, you could pay off that surcharge ahead of time. But usually what we do is we, we follow the terms of the loan, especially with this attractive rate of one point eight seven five percent. But it, to answer your question, thirty years unless we want to pay the debt down faster, which we've done in the past.
Any further discussion? The motion is to approve the resolution. All those in favor will say aye, opposed, nay. Officer Bobzine?
Okay. Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerns?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Item 12B is an authorization for the Watertown Regional Airport to accept a South Dakota Airport Terminal Program Grant in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars for the relocation of the airport tower and authorization for the CFO to issue a special check in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to South Dakota Department of Transportation based on program rules. Let's go to said Chief Financial Officer of Bobzine for more explanation.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Keith and I were arm wrestling who's going to take this one, so...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine.
Uh, who won the arm wrestling?
Sounds like me, no. Um, so before the council, I think, um, this had been brought before the airport board and I think conversations were had previously with the city council, but we did receive the grant and with that we have to sign into the agreement for that grant. Um, it is a nine hundred thousand dollar grant. Um, there is kind of a, a different aspect to this one with a two hundred thousand dollar kickback. It's really separate funds at the state level. So the requirement is to receive the grant, then we need to kick in the two hundred thousand to the, um, to the other pot of money. So otherwise, everything else is in order. This was part of the budget, um, in terms of receiving the grant. So when we did the 2025 budget, the project was already considered and there's some FEMA dollars that we had, um, from another project that we can allocate to a different one at the airport. So we're utilizing those funds as well. So if there's any questions, we can try to answer them. Thank you.
Assistant City Manager Von I, did you have something that you would like to add?
If you don't mind, if I took a few minutes to share a fun story related to this, uh, on how this came to be?
Yes.
So in 2024, the South Dakota legislatures decided to allocate a certain amount of money for airports across the state. I can't remember what the total dollar amount was. I think it was ten million or more. Uh, no, it was north of that. It was quite a bit of money. And so anyway, the specifics behind the legislation was that it had to go towards, uh, airport terminal improvements. And, um, so we at Watertown, we put in an application for this funding and we were initially denied by the Aeronautics Commission as being eligible for this funding. The Aeronautics Commissioner, who are charged with doling this money out from the state legislatures that approved the funding. And, uh, we met with the Ster, uh, Aeronautics Commission and gave them our pitch for our application. And really what it hinges on is this instrumentation relocation that we still have to undergo. We have a bunch of FAA equipment at our old terminal that's not been relocated yet. We have to do that at our expense because the FAA won't pay for it and they're telling us it's at our expense. So we don't have an option there. Uh, however, um, the, the pitch to the Aeronautics Commission that flipped us from being ineligible to eligible was simply explaining that whole story on how this equipment indeed is tied directly to the completion of our airport terminal project. It's really essentially the last step in order to complete our airport terminal project in order for the old one to be torn down and eventually rebuilt there by Lake Area, uh, who, you know, we've been in discussions with and have interest in doing so. Um, so with that fortitude with it not just for myself, but with the former city manager and with one of the airport board members who's also on the Aeronautics Commission and us attending that meeting, we were able to, uh, flip that, uh, determination of the Aeronautics Commission to being eligible. Brought this money forward now for helping pay for that relocation project. The two hundred grand that, uh, interim manager Bobzine has talked about, it's essentially a double dipping rule. The Aeronautics Commission won't let us have the nine hundred plus the two hundred they already gave us several months ago for the airport terminal project. So we end up with a net award of seven hundred thousand is what it boils down to. Anyway, I thought I'd provide a little bit more background there on, uh, on how that came to be.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to authorize the acceptance of the grant and to authorize the CFO to issue a special check. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Counsel, any discussion? Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor of item 12B, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're on to item 13, City Council Member Announcements and Introduction of Topics for Future Discussion. I know I would like to, um, op, open it up to our good friend, Assistant City Manager, Public Works Director Heath Von I. He's been here for six and a half years with the city and, uh, been through a lot and, uh, just want to say, say thank you, but I want you to take a chance to say any words that you would like to, uh, at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that greatly. Um, I, I'm in a little bit of a unique situation here. I've never had, uh, the press write my resignation story before I actually returned back to the community I was leaving. So they're a step ahead of me in that regard and, uh, I do have one request though that my wife has made. They do want, she does want to know if you can wait and let her pick out the curtains in our next house before that gets all the final line. No, all joking aside, that's, that's part of the role of, uh, public service and what we do and, uh, word travels fast. So, uh, I have, of course, been offered a position with another community and, uh, my last day with city Watertown will be January fifteenth. Um, it is a very bittersweet, uh, decision, uh, there, having poured six and a half years into everything we've been able to accomplish here in Watertown. And we've done a lot in six and a half years, uh, transformational things that really have, I feel, left this community in a better place than where it was. And obviously that's the goal, uh, of the work that we all do is we pour into everything from the elected officials to the department head team and all the way down through the staff that are the boots on the ground carrying everything out day to day. I had a, got an email typed up here that I'll send out later, but just trying to extract some thoughts from that. It's difficult to do, um, to talk about any one specific project or endeavor or improvement. Um, there's been so many in the realm of, uh, policies and procedures, uh, gain deficiencies for how we do work, uh, the structuring of the public works department, uh, all the interconnectivity that those divisions have with each other, uh, trying to gain some understanding in the community of what public works even is. Uh, that's been a challenge of its own too. But really I'd liken it no differently than, uh, Park and Rec Department. Uh, the Park and Rec Director oversees six different divisions, six, maybe seven of the park and rec functions for the community. Uh, it's really no different than the six divisions of public works that are all interconnected. Um, they're related in a lot of different ways that have to do with community transportation, community growth, uh, managing development, um, regulation, adoption and administration, uh, the sanitation of a community, you know, without solid waste and wastewater. We end up with, uh, infestation of rodents and other issues that we don't want in a clean community, in a developing community. Roadways, airports, bridges, all those things that we do in public works is, uh, really, um, what I've loved pouring into. But all the successes aside over the last, uh, half dozen years, the one I'll take with me that I'll tell everybody I'm most proud of has to be, uh, the public works team that we have on staff here today. It's a remarkable group of people, some of which have weathered many storms as we've gone along the six and a half years and others of which have joined us along the way. And I wouldn't trade any one of them, uh, for anything. Uh, them and their, they and their teams, uh, are remarkable and, uh, I just owe a debt of gratitude to them for helping make my job all the easier and, uh, for doing what they've done to pour into the work that we've helped accomplish with this council, with prior councils, uh, with the department head team. Echo that high level of respect that I have for my public works team to those teams as well, to this elected body, the prior elected bodies I've been able to work with and the department head teams that, uh, have evolved a little bit since I've been here, not a lot, but a little bit. Uh, we've all gone through tremendous amount of experience together that I do truly believe has been transformational for the betterment of Watertown. And with that, it, I'm, I'm proud to say it's a chapter of my personal and professional life that I will hold dearly and, uh, I look forward to moving on to other endeavors, but also look forward, forward to retaining the connections I've made here in Watertown.
And Director Von I, I just want to say on behalf of myself, but I'm sure that I speak for the council and the community, to just thank you for your intelligence, your eloquence, your professionalism throughout all the time that you've been here. Uh, I very much value what you have brought to the city of Watertown and there's no better testimony than if you leave something better than what you found it. And I think that you can say that. I also want to give you a hard time. I remember about three years ago, soon after I became mayor, it was my morning Bible reading and I come to you and I said, you know, this is totally unfair. Public Works Director is specifically mentioned in the Bible twice in Second Timothy and it acts. And it's like, how do you get that title in the Bible? It's like, there's no mayor, there's no city councilman mentioned.
Well, don't think I've forgotten that. Don't think I haven't shared that with others too, since, since learning that.
The name was Arastus, not Von I. But, uh, Councilman Shuddy?
On that though, for, depending on the version, some versions say it the treasurer, not the, so, Ms. Bobzine could be, takes him a little bit of...
Kristen, we, we hold, we hold positions of biblical stature, Kristen.
Uh, you can arm wrestle over which version of the Bible you wanted to go with, but, uh, anyway, thank you so much, uh, Director Von I. I think it would be appropriate if we give him a round of applause. Thank you very much. I know that we also have some more information regarding the succession planning committee coming from Councilman Peters, who is our liaison to that committee.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I'll tee it up and, and you fill in what I missed here, but, uh, the mayor appointed a succession planning committee. Uh, he's mentioned the names of these folks in the past, but it's comprised of Rob Peterson, Amber Dahl, Scott Munger, Joey Nelson, Chris Carter, uh, and Liam Colhane. And then, uh, myself is the liaison of the council, uh, but the mayor has attended, I think, every single meeting as well so far. Um, the purpose of this group was to just get some private sector mindset blended in with, uh, the aim to go find our next city manager. And, uh, they've done a knockout job. I think the mayor would agree. It's been fun watching these folks dive into the, the, the job description that the city put together for the first city manager and, and fine tune it and try to figure out ways that we can start thinking a little bit more like... and try to figure out ways that we can start thinking a little bit more like a CEO search, if you will, than a, than an actual city manager, because that's what it is for the, for the community. So, yeah, it's, it's fun to listen to these, these, these folks talk. And I think we try to be just mice in the corner to some extent. But they've really refined it down pretty well to, okay, well, it, it's nice to have a job description that's eight pages long, but how about like three? And they've done a really nice job getting it to that point. So the next step is that'll be in front of council for us to lay eyes on. And then we'll get that job description out to some RFP companies that have expressed interest. I think there's going to be a courtship here a little bit with some RFP companies to make sure that we're picking the right ones. And that's, that's really where we're at. They put the screws down before Christmas, got that job description done. Now we've put together a shortlist of RFP folks and recruiters and we'll get it out as soon as possible. So let me know what I missed. I think that's what I've got.
And I think, and thank you for that. I just wanted to add that the, I did forward to the council today, the RFP and the job description. I also sent it off to staff. We have already received two quick additions that have, that should be added to the job description. But the job description is a good point because the minds of these business people, that previous job description was 12 pages long. And they said, you know, several of them said, if this was the job description, they wouldn't even bother applying if it was that long. Now, whether or not that's true, who knows? But it's to pinpoint what is necessary in the next city manager. But I just want to say, we are committed to this. We can go forward and start requesting RFPs from recruiting firms. The goal is to hear back from them within the next two weeks. Hopefully, we can then vet them. Final decision is going to be council. Council is going to go through the recruiting firms and decide which one we want to go forward with. And I'm hoping we can make that decision by the end of January. I might be calling a special meeting just to choose the RF, the, the recruiting firm, depending upon how the timeline goes. Because we got to see how many, how many applications we get. Because obviously you want a lot of interest. I believe that we will get a lot of interest, just judging by how many people that I have had reach out to me interested in the position. And I know that two recruiting firms have previously reached out to me. So that is the timeline. So we are being aggressive. I want to thank the committee for the work that they have put in. I know that just with the shakeups that have happened at city hall, their work has been invaluable because I know staff has been asked to do a lot more. Obviously, you've had the, the holidays in there. So it has worked out very well. So we're going to move forward. I invite council to look over the job description and the RFP. And otherwise, we can go forward on that. And hopefully, by the end of January, we will start the search. And then the timeline on hearing back is going to be more up to the recruiting firm than it is to us. But I'm guessing you're looking at probably at least a month to six weeks to, for them to go out and find people, possibly longer than that. But the goal is to get someone in this position by springtime or sometime in springtime. Are there any other announcements?
I do have one, mayor.
Councilman Jerns?
We, we met for the CL zoning changes. We got done about 15 minutes before this meeting. Carla is going to be sending out a letter to interim city manager Bobzine and the mayor, asking if there could be a joint, a tentative date for January 21st, a joint meeting with planning commission. May or may not work, but we thought we'd get the information out there because there's going to be quite a few people that are going to likely have questions or listen in on, on what that meeting and what, what's entailed. But Carla Hewer and Brandy's whole department has worked quite a bit. And we're getting very, very close with the direction that we got from our last joint meeting. What was that, about four, six weeks ago? So we're looking forward to that. But just thought the public should know that's coming up, so it just isn't a surprise.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much for that work that you've been putting in on that. Any further announcements or topics for future discussion? City manager report? There's no reason to go into executive session. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by councilman Tupper, seconded by councilman Beeler. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.